Hello and welcome, everybody. It is 6:30 PM and I will call the Monday, August 26, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Our meeting today will be held in person and it's also available virtually on Zoom. I'm the chairperson. I'll lead the meeting and the public will be welcome to participate when invited. You're able to, we welcome your participation either in person or online via Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you experience audio trouble, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This is usually fixed issue. Additional instructions for how to participate are posted online at the city website, www.burnsvillemn.gov, and that's in the public meeting calendar. This meeting will also be available for viewing on BCTV and also on the city website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly here to City Hall. So the Zoom instructions are to participate online. You go to zoom.us/join and our meeting ID is 827-2781-3056. And once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you'd like to speak to. And I believe you're going to be put on hold until that item becomes available. You can also phone into the meeting. The telephone number is 651-372-8299. It is the same meeting ID, 827-2781-3056. And then for each of the public hearings, we'll open up a time when the callers may speak to that item or the public, and we'll give you more instructions at that time. If you're online or on the phone, your call will be muted until it's the public time for you to speak. We'll move on to our first item. This is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from commissioners? No changes? Any changes from staff? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from our last meeting of August 12, 2024. Are there any changes to the minutes from commissioners? None. Any changes from staff? No changes. Seeing that, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Motioned.
Motioned and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our third item, this is a public hearing. This is an application of John Messenbrink for a conditional use permit for retaining walls, grading severe slopes, and an open sales rental lot use at 2205 Highway 13 West. Presenting tonight will be Kevin Shea, our consulting planner. Mr. Shea, I'll give you a moment, but the floor is yours, Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I am filling in for Deb on this one, so bear with me on the PowerPoint. So before you do have a conditional use permit for John Messenbrink for retaining walls, grading of severe slopes, and an open sales rental lot at 2205 Highway 13 West. As you can see on the image, for the zoning, it is zoned B4, which is the highway commercial, and the lot does have some wooded areas and some severe slopes on it as you come off of Frontage Road South. So there was a survey submitted for the 2.12 acre lot. It does show 50 feet of elevation change from the front of the lot to the back of the lot, so a significant grade, which is one of the reasons for the application before you tonight. So the low point is the northwest corner. The high point is the southeast corner, and there is a 25-foot existing utility easement that is highlighted in yellow on the survey on the screen here. So that is in the northwest corner. There are some special overlay districts as well. It's in the drinking water environmental protection overlay zone, as well as the soil protection environmental overlay zone, which requires that CUP to grade within severe slopes, which are greater than 40% slopes. And then it is in the woodlands environmental overlay zone as well. For the site plan, they're proposing a new auto repair building. It's shown in the center of the site. It is 10,833 square feet. The site plan as a whole has a 54% impervious surface, which leaves us 46% for green space. There is also 8% green space within the parking area, which does meet the ordinance standards. And then they are proposing the perimeter green space around the building of 50% as well. And there is shown a trail easement in the northeast corner, so the top right corner on the site plan. Parking, they're anticipated to have eight employees, so it is for that that they have 20 required stalls. They are proposing 85 stalls, so well above the minimum requirement. And they do have on the site accessing it, they have four overhead doors, which you can see kind of on the site plan here that swing open on the south side and then one on the west side. And those are to access the interior auto repair within the building. So as you, this kind of shows it better on here. So like I said, the south is on the bottom of the image, so that's got four doors down there, as well as one on the west side. The shop space is what it may, provides access to. Then there is some office space, break rooms, things like that on the east side of the building. There is a paint booth. They do have 1,400 square feet of office and mezzanine, and then they have lockers, showers, and a break room. Building height is 22 feet tall. There is an additional three foot and three and a half foot screening wall to screen the exhaust for the painting equipment. So there's an exhaust for all the paint fumes to leave the shop. There's a three and a half foot screening wall to screen that equipment on the roof. And then they're requesting a CUP to use a 100% metal exterior material building versus 50%, and that's proposed factory manufactured insulated metal panel system, which is the CUP requirement, is that it has to be the prefabricated factory manufactured panels. So as shown on the building elevation, it does have gray metal panels with stone accents, so the stone wraps on the lower portion below the windows. And then there's a 150 square foot entrance as well. They do have contrasting trim, so the trim around the building is going to be black to offset the gray, so it's going to be a black and gray building, neutral tones. And then it has the metal roof screen to screen that paint equipment or that paint hood as well. These are the other two elevations, so it does wrap the entirety of the building. And then to show how that mechanical equipment is screened, there is that screening wall to provide it for the ductwork that leads up to the exhaust for that painting. Here's to show some cross-sections that were provided to show sightlines for the rooftop screening. It also does demonstrate the slope on the site as well, so you can see how significant the grade changes as well, showing that the sightlines from each area are, will not be visible, the rooftop equipment won't be visible with the screening provided and the building itself. So the grading plan, they do have on the northwest corner a biofiltration basin proposed for stormwater management. They are requesting a CUP, given the severe slopes on the site, retaining walls are necessary to allow the site to be utilized. A CUP is needed when they're over a certain amount of height, which is eight feet. There are multiple retaining walls. There's one on the south and the east. They're about 11 feet tall. The west is eight and a half feet tall, and then the north side is the tallest at 13 and a half feet tall. So all of those are, have to be engineered retaining walls, and they require a CUP when they're above the eight-foot height. And they are proposing a 42-inch vinyl coated chain link safety fence to surround the site. As far as the utility plans, they're providing connections off of Frontage Road South, and then they also have catch basins within the parking lot that lead out to the stormwater basin on the northwest corner as well. The landscape plan, they are, so there is existing trees there, and I think the tree preservation slide is the next one. So they are preserving some trees. This is, would be in addition to the trees that they are preserved on site. So they do have landscaping proposed. It is concentrated on the north property line adjacent to Frontage Road South, and then a couple trees on the east side, along with the landscaping surrounding the building and within the parking lot. Tree removal, so you can do up to 60% removal in the B4 zone. Eighty-three and a half percent is proposed as part of the removal, so that leaves 16 and a half percent preserved on site. So that, when you do that and go above the removal allowance, you have to do woodland replacement along with tree preservation security to ensure that the remaining preserved trees may, are kept throughout construction. So those are conditions of approval and the recommended conditions. Okay, so staff does recommend, and I'm going to read through the whole thing like we did last time, so we can go through all the conditions.
Thank you.
Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the CUP subject to the following conditions. Tree removal permit is required prior to removing the trees. The woodland replacement fee in the amount of $9,118 shall be paid. A tree preservation security in the amount of $6,408 shall be provided. A cash letter, cash security or letter of credit shall be provided for site landscaping, bituminous paving, concrete curb and gutter, and erosion control at the time of permit. Exterior equipment, meters, ducts, fans, et cetera, on the exterior of the building will need to be painted or be 100% screened from view from the street and adjacent properties. A signed permit shall be obtained prior to installation of exterior signs in the building and property. A photometric plan shall be submitted at the time of building permit. An encroachment agreement shall be executed for encroachments into public drainage and utility easements, and written documentation from the utility holders indicating the approval of their proposed improvements within their easement shall be provided. A trail easement over the northeast part of the lot shall be provided. All outstanding comments from the city engineer memo dated June 25, 2024 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. A city permit for construction of a retaining mall shall be required, and an NPDES construction stormwater general permit will need to be obtained prior to the start of construction, and a copy of the permit shall be submitted to the city engineer. A permit for work within the right-of-way of Frontage Road South, Frontage Road South shall be obtained. So with that, if you have any questions for staff, I'll take those. Otherwise, the applicant is here for the public hearing portion.
Thank you for that presentation. My first question, tree, number three, tree preservation security, that, it's like a security deposit that's refunded at the completion of the project or at certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
Yeah, essentially, the tree preservation security is taken at the beginning of the project to ensure that all the trees, the 16 and a half percent that are going to remain, stay on site.
Yeah.
And we would use that if any of those trees were either accidentally removed as part of construction or damaged in any way. And then at the end of the project, once those trees have been identified as being preserved, they can, we then release the security.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Anderson.
I didn't see it in here. Maybe it is in there. Retaining wall, what kind of material would that be?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner. So each retaining wall will have to be structurally designed, so I'm not actually sure what materials will be in there, but depending on the height, it will have to be a material that the structural engineer deems adequate for the height of the wall. Most likely that we block or stone, but each wall could vary depending on the height that they have.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hamilton.
Thank you, Chair. On the, is there a, an additional entrance that's going to come off the Frontage Road onto the property?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. There is an additional entrance that will come off of Frontage Road South on the northeast corner, so maybe the easiest one is the aerial imagery. So on the very northeast corner essentially is where the access will come in for the property.
Other questions from Commissioner John?
So, thank you, Chair. You had mentioned that this is, building materials outside of the manufactured metal. That's not the first time we had something like this in Burnsville, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. It looks like they've removed most of the trees already that are going to be removed on the lot, because when I drove by, it's, there's a lot less trees than what shows in the imagery.
I couldn't comment on that as I haven't been to the site recently, so that would, that would have to come, be a question either for the Burnsville staff or Deb when she returns.
I can, excuse me. Commissioner, that's a great question. The trees were removed earlier this year. The state has very strict rules on when trees can be removed due to the long-eared bat, so a lot of tree removal occurs in April for the migration season for the bat. So it's a new kind of thing coming out the last couple of years.
Seeing no further questions, we'll move to the public hearing section of this item. So it is 6:44. I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak to this item, you're welcome to approach the podium and state your name and address. And are there, is there anybody online that is wanting to speak to this item?
Nope.
Nobody online? And there's nobody in the chamber that's coming to the podium, so we will close the public hearing at 6:45 and move it to discussion from commissioners. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Hamilton.
Yes, I do have one more question. The parking lot, what is the material they're going to use for the parking lot? I didn't, I missed that.
I believe the parking lot will be entirely bituminous within a curb and gutter, running along all the exterior portions of the parking lot.
Commissioner John, did you have a question?
I'm not a question, more of a comment. I'm, I think this is a great, great project for this location. It seems like a good space, and unless anybody else has anything else to add, I can go ahead and make the motion.
The floor is yours.
Oh, good deal. I would like to make the motion that we recommend the approval by city council of the conditional use of the, take the glass, move, I'm at the wrong spot. City council approval of the CUP subject to the following conditions, the 14 conditions that Mr. Shea had read off earlier.
Excellent. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion is, motioned and seconded, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So this will be on the city council, I'm looking at the wrong place. This will be before the city council on September 17. And just as information for the room, when we have a unanimous approval of an item, then it typically will go on to the city council consent agenda where they'll just, they won't necessarily have discussion on it. They may, they may pull it off the consent agenda, but when we vote unanimously, it automatically goes to their consent agenda. So we'll move to our next item. This is our next public hearing. This is an application for CenterPoint Energy. This is for a preliminary and final plat of Dakota Station First Edition, a conditional use permit amendment and variance to an upgrade to the liquid national, liquid natural gas LNG vaporization facility, and this is at 1150012th Avenue South. Again, Mr. Shea, our consulting planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Filling in for Deb on this one again. So this is the CenterPoint Energy Preliminary and Final Plat for Dakota Station First Edition at 1150012th Avenue South. The conditional use permit amendment is for the expansion of the essential services, the allowance of the 100% metal exterior materials, similar to the previous application we just heard about, and the replacement of the barbed wire fence. The variances are for fill slopes to exceed a three-to-one slope, four-to-one is what's proposed, and then a zero building perimeter landscaping versus the 50% standard, where it's a minimum of a six-foot depth for that perimeter landscaping. So the site is up near the river. It's their existing campus. It's an I-1 industrial park zoning. They've been operating there for quite a while. I believe in the history report, it was in the 1950s, earlier, it was prior to the incorporation of Burnsville, actually. And they've since been modifying and updating their equipment as necessary to provide service or essential service, which is their use category. So the construction area location is limited to a small portion of their 122-acre campus, and it's depicted in the blue circle there. That's where their liquid vaporization equipment is stored. As part of their previous CUP application for an amendment, they are required to come in with a preliminary and final plat with this application to plat the property, so that is why this is part of this application. The preliminary and final plat don't show anything different than what is currently on site. It's essentially depicting the existing site layout, topography, existing utilities, things like that. So the preliminary plat does show all of that information on it. And then the final plat is the recording document, which only shows drainage and utility easements along with the boundary lines and then legal descriptions and recording information. There are a number of environmental overlay districts. The wetland environmental overlay district is shown on the blue on this image. None of it impacts the area they are actually proposing to do the construction work, but it is impacting the property itself, just not a part of the construction area that they're proposing. There are soil erosion environmental severe slopes on here, similar to the past project as well. Those are all contained on the south portion of the existing campus, the majority of all their equipment. From the previous, when I showed the construction area, that's just north of this area. So again, it doesn't impact the area where they're doing the construction, but it is part of the property. The entire site is in the drinking water protection overlay. So blown up on the survey here is the area we're actually talking about with the existing heater building and then the proposed heater building that is going to be added as part of their upgrades or improvements. There is also city well access through the property as well, and that will be maintained through this project. As far as the grading plan, there is the liquid natural gas or the LNG pump area is next to their existing storage tank, so that's the easiest one to identify when you're looking at an aerial, is the big white marshmallow. To the east of that is the actual pump area for that, and then the proposed heater building would just be south of that, both indicated here with the labels. As far as the utility plan, it would just connect off of their existing utilities to serve the additional improvements for the pump area, as well as the heater building itself with the electrical area attached. As you see here, this is indicating the severe slopes on the property. As I mentioned, in the center with the, the white marshmallow is the feature that we're looking at to find the severe slopes adjacent to some of the existing equipment. So there is some areas in between that they will have to manage some of those slopes to maintain those. They do have area to do their improvements without impacting those severe slopes. So variance for four-to-one finish slopes, that's for their equipment process areas and their spill pit. That's essentially to work with some of the severe slopes that they have there and then go to a four-to-one slope where a three-to-one slope is typical. Three-to-one is more standard for access and, you know, safety concerns, making sure that's not too severe for someone to move around. These would not be areas that are public areas that someone would be accessing, so that's the reason for the four-to-one finish slopes. This shows some of those proposed improvements along with some upgrades on timeline for when they're going to do those. So the essentially existing gravel pad for the entire site is the orange boundary. The blue boundary or the blue area is the 2024 proposed upgrades. That includes those process areas along with the equipment access areas. And then the 2025 upgrades, the following upgrades would be to do the actual pumps along with the heater building and the vaporization impoundment area. So the existing heater building, this is the building already on site. As you can see, it's all metal with a metal roof, so the proposed building would then match that. So the, the proposed building on the elevations here, it's going to be almost identical to this building, except for there's three doors versus two, but it would match in material and style as well. So with that, staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the preliminary and final plat for the CUP amendment, the CUP amendment to allow improvements to the CenterPoint Energy LNG, which is the liquid natural gas vaporization facility, essential service, allowing 100% metal exterior building materials and to replace an existing barbed wire fence, and also variance to allow four-to-one slopes and no building perimeter landscaping for the proposed heater building at 1150012th Avenue South, subject to the following conditions, which are the conditions of previously approved CUP shall remain in full force and effect. This is a multi-phase project and the CUP will not expire, provided construction begins at the site by December 2025. Accommodation shall be provided to ensure the city has access rights over the driveway located west of the well at 800 Cliff Road East. Outstanding items identified in the city engineer memo dated August 6, 2024 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. With that, I'll stand for any questions from the commission.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Any questions from commissioners? Uh-oh, no questions.
Why are you looking at me?
It's okay if there's no questions.
I have one, Chair, sorry. Chair, Commissioner, there is one condition that was not on the screen. I apologize, just caught it now. There should be a fifth condition, thanks to Kevin over here that caught it. Prior to the release of the final plat for recording, all development fees in the amount of $367,533.96 shall be paid. So I apologize, that should be number five on there.
Okay, that's kind of a big one, so thank you. So seeing no questions, we'll move directly to a public hearing here at 6:55, and we'll open the floor to anybody in the audience or in the council chamber that wants to speak. You're welcome to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. I don't see anybody. Is there anybody online that's?
Nope.
Nobody online? Okay, so, and nobody in the council chamber, so we'll close the public hearing. We'll call it at 6:56 and open this up for discussion amongst commissioners. Any, Commissioner Anderson?
I make a motion that we send to the city council the recommendation to approve this CUP with the conditions, including number five.
Okay, there's, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this motion carries. Thank you, thank you very much. And again, this will be on the city council, at the city council meeting on September 17. Our next item, this is a public hearing. This is the application of the city of Burnsville for a planned unit development amendment for a remodel and expansion of the existing city hall and police department located at 100 Civic Center Parkway. That is the building that we are all in right now. Presenting will be Jeff Thompson, our deputy city manager and community development director. And you're not the only one presenting, correct?
I'm Chair, I'm not. I'll introduce the other folks.
Okay, I'll let you handle the introductions then. The floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and commissioners. I just have, just a brief introduction for, for you and for the community for this item. So as you know, over the past several years, the city has been planning for the facility needs at the police and city hall facility that we are at tonight, and that culminated with the pre-design process that was about 14 months in length, started in September of 2022 and wrapped up in November of 2023, that really identified what are the facility needs to meet both the police and city hall and the community needs to support our businesses and our residents here in Burnsville over the next 40 to 50 years. And so that pre-design process wrapped up to kind of identify those facility needs, and then the council, the city council kicked off the design process for this building, for the site and building design of the project in January of this year. And so that is with our project partners at CNH Architects who are here tonight. That, as with all development applications, it is subject to our zoning and subdivision regulations, which really what brings us here tonight as part of the project process and the steps along the way with the council and the community and the design team and the project team at the city. The planning commission's role is, you know, is here to review this project and the development application that's required in the PUD amendment to ensure that it's consistent with our zoning and our subdivision regulations, and then make an advisory recommendation to the council. So that's my brief introduction. I'll turn it over. I know the planning manager, Mr. Morosola, has kind of the zoning review that we do as part of staff, the comprehensive staff review of the development application. And then we have Queen Hudson and Brooke Jacobson with CNH tonight, who will also just walk through some of the other additional site plan and building amenities that are planned as part of the project. And after that, we are certainly available to answer the commission's questions.
All right. I got it. All right. So the subject site is located where we are tonight, 100 Civic Center Parkway. The subject site is zoned park and has a plan unit development, plan unit development here, poised to amend tonight. The subject property is guided as park recreation, the 2040 Conference of Plan. On the screen in front of you now is the highlighted area of the subject parcels we'll be speaking of tonight. I'd like to make another comment that the city does own an additional 71 acres of this total complex here, including the 26, the subject area in front of us tonight. So a little background of the site, in 1988, the PUD was approved by the city council. The PUD allowed for the construction of a city hall. The PUD allowed for the construction of a city hall that was 70,300 square feet. The construction was completed in 1989. There's been other various amendments through time. Some of the most recent ones is 2010, the city rezoned the property from B1 to PUD, B1 slash PUD to park. The rationale behind this was as part of the comprehensive plan process, some of the residents brought up concern that the area could be developed as it was zoned B1 into some other uses or sold. So the city took the opportunity then as part of the comprehensive plan process to re-guide and re-zone the property to park to eliminate that concern for the adjacent residents. Then in 2017, a PUD amendment came forward for approval and was approved for 22,000 square foot expansion and renovations to the existing city hall. The primarily this was to the public safety side or police department side of the facility. Did include some improvements to the front of the entrance here to city hall, but mainly it was the police garage in addition to the police department. So it brings us to talk a little bit about the site. The total site area, which the subject city hall, subject site the city hall is on is 21.86 acres. The total building square footage right now is 95,658. The impervious surface is 20% of that 21.86. Green space is at 80%. Green space of parking is at 3.82. Building perimeter landscaping is at 45. And there's an existing 600 and 14 parking stalls. That parking is shared between the police department, city hall facility and across the street with the ice arena. So it's, they're all together in this. Also worth noting, there was three wetlands, four wetlands on site. We'll talk about those a little, little bit more here in a minute. So the site plan in front of you tonight that we're taking a look at, the PUD amendment, the site area is not changing. The total area is, total building area is increasing by 120,000 to 215,933 square feet. The proposed impervious surface does increase as part of this project to 26.5. The proposed green space does decrease only by 2.2%, a little more to 73.5%. The green space with parking does increase. There's a lot more parking islands, as you can see mainly at the city hall site, there's more parking, green space there. And across the street at the ice arena, there's a proposed pedestrian walkway in between there of landscaping in the middle, if I can point to my cursor, in this general area Turn the laser pointer on, so this general area here. And then there is some green space in this area too, around the parking lot, which increases that. The perimeter landscaping is at 52.7. There's a significant landscaping plan that's been provided as part of this application that we'll go through. And the proposed parking does decrease by about 40 stalls, but we'll go through that as part of the application later in the presentation. Couple of things to point out as part of this proposed remodel to the existing city hall is the new access here onto 130th Street. This proposed access would provide parking for police, deliveries and trash pickups. That's the only uses for that area. It's not used for city staff, city hall staff to park back there. It is strictly for police. Other part two, currently, a lot of the city vehicles you see are parked currently out there. There is an underground garage proposed in this section for about 25 city vehicles. And then overall, the police vehicle parking area is getting enlarged as well. We'll cover that as we go further in the presentation. First big one, I don't know what to talk about is the architecture. The proposed architecture, it's, the Sony district is unique. There is no standards for this district. So we had to take a look at, so we compare this building to our commercial and business districts. And this does meet those requirements or exceeds those requirements in the commercial and mixed use district. The proposed materials include brick, stone, glass, composite and aluminum panels. The structure at its tallest point is 43 feet and all rooftop equipment that is visible from the public right away is screened as part. Again, a lot of the materials that you see around here are currently found on fire station one within the community. Parking, the ordinance requires one space per three patient, patrons at a maximum capacity plus one space per employee on the largest shift. So the architect did the calculations on max capacity and came to determination that there's 394 parking stalls required. There is 433 proposed. The 433, it's worth noting that those are all public parking stalls. There is additional parking on site for vehicles and community vehicles and police. So we'll go through the sections. There's really two items to talk about as we go through the parking. The first one is the police parking. There is existing lot that's currently over here that were removed and redeveloped will have 29 stalls. And then a new parking lot in the rear of the building on the north side will have 32 stalls. So a total of 61 stalls overall for police staff parking. The parking garage generally located right here will have two access doors and that will have, be increased from 31 stalls currently to 74. It's also worth knowing that we will have two additional stalls back here that will provide parking for SWAT or other police vehicles. Then the city hall surface parking, the existing lot, as you can see, the building is coming into the, the existing lot and a lot of the parking will be shifted from the main campus across the street. As part of that, there is a dedicated walkway, a raised walkway proposed here. So there is 72 stalls on the primary campus. And then on the other side of the street, the overflow slash city hall parking or the ice arena parking, there is a total of 361. And then some of the garage, there's another garage here that'll be parking for our inspection vehicles, our code enforcement and engineering vehicles will be parked in here. So that, that will open up additional parking here. However, since this is a shift, we did hire a consultant, take a look at, at the parking and did complete a parking study. Stan Tech did, did perform this. They did take a look also at transportation and access management as part of it. They did find it's within the, your packets, the traffic study was provided, that this proposed parking does work. A lot of the events that are at the ice arena and city hall are off peak or off at different times. So there should be ample parking for the city hall and ice arena. And again, that was provided within the Stan Tech traffic study, those included in your packets. Tree preservation, the park, the district that this proposed project is in allows for removal up to 20%. The applicant's proposing to remove 18%. It's also worth knowing that there's a lot more woodlands that are currently here. This is only 18% of, on the subject parcel. There is approximately 22.3 acres, 3.7 acres of additional woodland adjacent to the site. And then the woodland removal is only for the areas that requires removal. A lot of the buffering is being, trees along the park, along, excuse me, along 133rd Street are being preserved as part of this application. There will be an opening here to allow for the secondary access and to enlarge some of the ponds in this area to accommodate the stormwater as proposed as part of this project. Again, the landscaping plan is very highly, very significant. It does have a lot of plantings on there. So the 18% of trees are being removed and replaced with 274 trees on site. You see significant plantings along Civic Center Parkway, around the building, the base of the building and within the parking lots. The images on the screen here show what the screening will be from 130th Street. This is obviously if leave on. So it is very, the building and the growth additions are very well screened from 130th Street. There is a minor opening here where the access is provided. Again, we put it right at another elevation here. This is at full maturity of the trees and planted in front of city hall. Again, there's 274 trees that are proposed, 1,437 troves and 6,205 perennials are planted around the site. So a lot of emphasis is given on the plantings around here, the quality and everything to provide the excellent buffering for the adjacent uses and to complement the architecture. Utilities on site, again, there are four existing stormwater ponds, two of which are proposed to be enlarged as part of this project. Because of that, we do have an application that's currently under review for wetland impacts. We have a wetland impact permit that's currently under review that's anticipated to be completed this week. Just to allow for these impacts to these wetlands. We also are, had our city attorney draft a encroachment, excuse me, a decoration of encroachment to allow encroachments into the drainage and utility easements. It's the blue area shows here on the screen, this is an existing drainage and utility easement. There is an encroachment here by the proposed building in this corner here. And then there's another one here on the, on the police side of it. So this decoration will allow us to encroach into that, into that easement. And there, this is a very common practice. The city council will approve this as part of the overall project at their next meeting. But wanted to point that out that there is some minor encroachments into the drainage utilities, excuse me, inside encroachment into the drainage utilities, not wetland, drainage utilities, but the wetlands are fine. Again, here this shows the proposed additions on here as well. As part of this project too, there is an underground treatment, stormwater treatment facility that's proposed, that was just highlighted in green here. All the stormwater and existing piping on site will utilize, will flow to the existing stormwater on site and within the street. All the utilities are currently present as well, so there's no utility upgrades and within the right of way that are supposed part of this project. The applicant submitted also a detailed lighting plan. Ordinance requires foot candles be point five or less at the property line. The proposal in front of us tonight, it does meet this requirement. The, the proposed lighting is LED. Accent lighting on the building is also LED, so it's pedestrian lighting around the site, which is all consistent with ordinance. The recommendation is on the screen, but before that, I want to say that there is an apron meeting that was held on August 8, 2024. Knows this were mailed to 591 properties around city hall. Five residents attended the meeting. Questions were raised regarding the proposed new site access onto 130th and construction timing. Also, a public hearing notice was published in the Sun this week on August 13th. No comments were received by staff at the time of writing this report. Staff recommends approval of the planned unit development for the expansion of the city hall and police department at 100 Civic Center Parkway, Parkway, it's under twice and most than, I apologize, subject to the following conditions. The project shall be completed in accordance with the plans submitted and amended by, and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant modifications to plans as determined by plan staff shall require review and approval by plan commission and city council. All the conditions of the previously approved planned unit development shall be remain in full force and effect. Uses in the underlying zoning district as permitted and/or accessory uses as allowed in addition to specific uses in the approved planned development. All outstanding conditions from the engineering memo dated August 1, 2024 shall be addressed to satisfaction of the city engineer. The declaration of encroachment shall be signed and recorded prior to the release of a building permit. The applicant is also responsible for obtaining any other permits necessary from agencies prior to start of any site activities. With that, I will turn it over to the architect.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Quinn Hudson with CNH Architects, one of the principals. Also with me tonight is Brooke Jacobson, another principal, and together we're partnering on leading, the leadership of this project. We're excited to be here tonight. We've been working together with city staff and, and council for, as you heard, years now to work our way through the pre-design and to the point we're at today. So we're very excited to be here. I have a few goals that I'd like to say is something that we've been really focusing on through the process. One of the top ones has been providing for safety, training and wellness for the police and city hall staff. Very important goal that's being supported by the city. Wellness would include things like adding quiet reflection space, patios, day rooms, things like that. Training includes defensive tactical training, gun range training and classroom training. And in addition to that, the, the safety important to the, the project as well. With that, we're, we're providing secure parking for all of the police department parking areas, including some of the expanded areas inside the building at both for city hall and police. Perimeter protection for the building and, and staff safety within the, the full design. Another major goal is committing a community focus within the design process to better serve the residents of the city of Burnsville. So some of that, very focused on welcoming commons area and really creating that opportunity for the citizens to really connect and make it easy for them to do so. Open, comfortable council chambers, community rooms that are on the main level, very accessible right off the entrance and connecting to an outdoor patio. And then a plaza including a drop-off. Those are all very important things to kind of improve the, the site and provide access for the, for the citizens. Finally, in goals, we were looking at designing a building as said before, that is meets the test of time, that, that serves the city well for the next 40 to 50 years. And with that, important thing that was flexible use of space, room for the growth that has been identified, as well as building with quality, low maintenance materials that will last that, that test of that time, so long-term value. Some site opportunities that I'm going to mention, certainly we talked a little bit about pedestrian movement. It was very important to provide a strong, clear entrance to the city hall and then onto the police department entry. Along with that entrance pathway, we've included a, what they call it, a tabletop pedestrian, so it's a raised pedestrian crossing on Civic Center Parkway along with a push button flashing light. So we're really focused on making a very, you know, safe connection between the sides of the site. Other things we're looking at was, you know, we talked a bit about stormwater. The site, you know, as mentioned, included, includes underground storage and infiltration basins. That will not only reduce the amount of, of rainwater that actually reaches the stormwater system, but will help clean and filter the water that does get to it. With that, so as I mentioned, there's reduced amount of water that actually goes into the ponds that are on site. Additionally, we're looking at creating a lower, what we're calling a boardwalk patio area and that provides that opportunity to connect users back to nature in that lower level. So a bunch of things we're, you know, excited about in that as well. And then finally, on the site wise, we mentioned that there's significant landscaping. We really want to incorporate this in, into a, a strong natural feel for the city.
So just to touch on a few of the exterior building elements, as part of that goal that's been mentioned a couple of times and making sure that we're providing a building that's going to last into that, those 40, 50 years, we want to make sure that all of our exterior materials that we're using are very durable and timeless. In addition to that, it was important to the design committee that we're starting to build a cohesive image throughout the city. And so as Mike mentioned earlier, we're utilizing the brick from fire station one as well as some of the composite wall panel materials, just in a slightly different colors befits police and city hall instead of the bright red of the fire station. And then we're also, so that's, you see that on the new additions, but also we're, we're wrapping that into the existing building itself. The original building is, part of the, existing walls are starting to, to fail over time. And so we'll actually removing the exterior elements that are failing and replacing that with new elements that will blend in with the new materials being provided at the new additions, providing a cohesive, full refresh of the entire exterior then. Some of the other important items, we're making sure that we have a lot of glass to provide both daylighting and views out. So throughout the facility, we have, you know, wide tall windows, high clear story windows to make sure that we're allowing that natural light to come in for the occupants inside the building, but also provide good views out towards some of that natural landscape Quinn just mentioned. And then also making sure, as we touched on from the outside, but making sure that we're providing clear and welcoming entrances for both police and city hall, that as the community is walking out, they can clearly see those entrances and feel welcome as they come from the exterior into the inside of the building.
With that, any questions for us at this time?
Any questions, Commissioners, for the architect or, go ahead, Commissioner John?
So it almost looks like there's a second story coming in. Is that correct? Another story above this one? Or is it just a way to bring in more light?
So it's just, if you're seeing that part at the kind of main entrance there, it's, it's a bit taller, both on the police and city hall side. The police side is just kind of over their main lobby space and that's to bring in some tall, clear story windows up high to bring in that, that natural light. On the city hall side, as you come in, enter the building, that taller element stretches all the way to the backside of the, the commons area to make that direct connection to both the exterior from the backside of the building and the front side of the building. But it allows us to bring in more glass, again, at that high level, clear story, to bring in that natural daylight.
But from the front is just one story as it is today, obviously as a walkout on the lower level is the second story. Yep.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Thank you, Chair. With the dramatic increase in square footage.
With the dramatic increase in square footage, what was being done to increase or provide energy efficiency?
Several things that immediately come to mind anyway. Certainly with the opportunity to provide new skin for the building, new, new roof throughout, we're able to increase the insulation value significantly throughout the, not only the new construction, but the existing construction as well. We're also making the several areas of the, the building solar PV ready, so that if that is a direction that is pursued, it's all set to go. And so that was another significant impact and energy saving. Of course, LED lighting, high efficiency heating systems, things like that.
I have a question for Mr. Morosola, and it's about the public. You said there was a public meeting on August eighth, and five hundred and fifty residents were mailed invitations. Is that, there's a rule where it's everybody within three hundred and fifty feet of the property line gets an invitation to one of these. Does, is that, was that five, is that how we got to five fifty? Or did we expand that beyond the three hundred and fifty feet of the property boundary?
Chair Commissioners, yes, we did expand it. We did the three hundred and fifty that's required by state statute, and then we expanded it to areas where we thought to be the most impact. So mainly properties north of one hundred and thirty-third, or one hundred and thirtieth Street. So we went all the way deeper into that area to allow for people to know about the project.
Oh, awesome. That's great to hear. Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
On the new entrance on one hundred and thirtieth, are there ways to block that so that only the people that can get in should be going in there, go in there? Is there anything designed into this?
There, there certainly is a, a gate and fence slightly further into that area that separates out the Police parking to make it secure. But the deliveries and trash removal are things that would require regular access. So we wouldn't be able to put it right at the street to allow that to function. But we do have it slightly in. And again, the focus of that area is just for additional Police parking, the access of that lower garage, and then the delivery access areas.
If I can add to that, Commissioner, Commissioner, I missed that in my presentation. There is an eight-foot-tall decorative security fence around the public safety parking. There is a gate here on the screen, if you can see where I'm pointing. And then there's an eight-foot-tall decorative fence, security fence around here, and another one over here as well on the staff parking area, and gate for access into the parking garage. So I apologize if I missed that in my presentation.
I have a quick, I have a question about this entrance onto one hundred and thirtieth Street. May I ask a question that I think maybe is going to come up? You know, are we going to have police cars come screaming out of there at two o'clock in the morning because there was an accident on Highway, on County Road eleven? Or what, is there, just, what, what sort of traffic can people expect to see in and out of that?
Chair Commissioners, good evening. My name is Greg Lindberg, the city manager here in Burnsville. It's a great question. The short answer is no. There won't be police operations when you think of lights and sirens coming out of that entrance. As a matter of fact, one of the things is, is our project team has pointed out tonight that we've been very cognizant of is current today operations and changes to those operations based on the changes on site. So right now, code three traffic, traffic coming out of the Police Department, lights and sirens, would come out onto Civic Center and go either direction onto Nicollet. Really nothing about our operation changes. The garage, the Police garage that houses our equipment in that regard stays in the place that it is now. There will be some Police traffic back in, in that area of the facility. Our emergency action group, as an example, will have their equipment stored back on that side of the building. But again, it's been our longstanding practice not to run lights and sirens. If we don't have to, coming out onto Civic Center, we would maintain that practice as, is the current condition, and we're very cognizant of making sure that we maintain that practice on the backside of the building. As a matter of fact, there won't be our typical marked squad cars coming in and out of that entrance really at all, based on how we currently have the site planned and operations planned. There will be some staff Police parking back there and some operations that happen, but it'll be minimal.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
When I was looking at the, where the entrance would be, it looks like there's a utility pole on the south side of the road. Is, is there utilities that have to be moved or changed?
There is a pole directly adjacent to the new entrance here. Absolutely correct. Electrical power is not changing there, but there is a bunch of other utilities that are being accessed from that side, which is also part of the impact of having the drive is we can put those utilities underneath that drive entrance area. So we're, we'll have sanitary as well as a new water service that is coming in from that side of the, of the site. And we need to separate those between the sites. Part of the looping process as well to make sure utilities always come in one side and then the other side of a public facility like this.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Thank you. Regarding crossing over from the parking lot where the ice arena is and the doughnut, is there only one walkway that crosses over? Or are there multiple? Is that the only walkway?
Commissioner, there is an additional walkway at the ice arena that is being reinforced at the far end of that. It's, yeah, down in that area. That would come across through there. It would not be upgraded with the tabletop entrance because we don't see significant traffic, pedestrian traffic there. We see the pedestrian traffic really being at the main focus area where we're providing the safety features.
Can you clarify what you mean by tabletop crossing?
Absolutely. So the, a tabletop or a raised pedestrian crossing would be where the crossing comes across at the same height as the sidewalk. And then there's small ramps that go up to that tabletop. That structure has been shown to, to slow traffic more than any other type of crosswalk and create the greatest amount of safety. In addition, we're looking at having a push-button flashing light so pedestrians can create a flashing indicator to also indicate that they're crossing at that time.
Just like a big wide speed bump?
Yes.
Crosswalk.
Exactly.
Thank you. Another question. Commissioner Anderson?
When you consider the fact that you're moving some of the city vehicle parking out of that lot, how many spots are we really losing on the north side of Civic Center?
Right. If I do the math, I believe we have ninety-seven installs when you add seventy-two of the ungrade parking ones with the twenty-five that brings the city staff, not staff, but the city-owned vehicles under the City Hall. So, you know, combined, we, maybe if I make sure I'm answering the question that you're asking, I kind of went on a trail here. But so there's twenty-five stalls that we provide in, in the City Hall basement parking garage, and that is meeting the needs of the general vehicles that are being parked out on the lot right now. So to open those spaces up to other parking. Hopefully that was the question that was being asked.
How many are we, are we losing net?
Yeah, okay. So we're, we're losing from one sixty-three, if I see the number up there correctly. Two seventy-two, but seventy-two also includes the twenty-five that are below. So that's ninety-seven stalls. So the difference would be sixty-six stalls less on that side of Civic Center.
But also I would say there's probably another almost twenty stalls that not all of the Police staff parking can fit behind the secured parking now, and so they're parking out on that surface area, and that would come out of that number as well.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Following up on the Police parking, so I, you know, I know that the thirty-two stalls, you know, off one hundred and thirtieth, the twenty-nine stalls to the west, what does that represent?
Those twenty-nine stalls to the west side there are the, the personally-owned vehicles of the Police staff. So the, the only cars that go inside on the garage are the, you know, city-owned squad and similar cars. But this staff parking is on those twenty-nine, as well as the thirty-two in the north side of the building.
Seeing no further questions, we'll maybe move this to the public hearing section of our meeting. So it is seven thirty PM. We will open the public hearing, and if you are, we, so a couple of people did sign in that I believe want to speak to this, and we'll start with them. And then anybody after that can approach the podium, and we'll take people one at a time. So the first person that signed up was Dan McDowell.
Hello. My name's Dan McDowell, and I've been a resident here for thirty-something years. The question I have is I live on Second Avenue. Were you proposing to put the through, through put in there? It takes me a little time. I've had strokes, so bear with me. I got a couple of questions. First of all, the traffic control that you're going to have off of one thirtieth to go in there, is that going to be regulated by a light or, or other ways? And then? I'm, I'm sorry, taxes, the, what's the property values going to do to the residents in our neighborhood there? What's going to, what's the impact on my house tax? Because I haven't seen anything get addressed about that. And when you have new constructions and everything, there's going to be a lot more traffic, more lights, more things in there, and things, I'm sorry. And I'm just concerned that my property value is not, is going to be affected. I'm sorry, I can't think of the other things I was going to say that took so long. But anyway, you have a great day. Thank you for addressing me.
Yeah, thank you for your, make your comments. Do we want to address those? Is it, oh, okay, well, we'll, we'll continue with public testimony while we're in the public hearing. So the next person on our speaker sign-in sheet is Hope Manley. Yes, Ms. Manley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I already spoke today at Rotary, so I can get to do this again. I live on Second Avenue, moved here in nineteen seventy-six, way before all you guys moved into this area here. This is not the first time that they've discussed having an entrance off Second Avenue or just coming off one hundred and thirtieth. If you look back on the history of how this all began, you are in a residential section. Thank you for the Civic Center Parkway. We love you for that. You are great neighbors. I have complained on a couple of things, the air conditioner in the summertime, and the garbage truck at five o'clock in the morning. That sounds like a gun going off. And I did complain at your August eighth meeting on that, and I think someone took action because now they're picking up your garbage at four or five o'clock in the afternoon. Thank you for that. Didn't think a gun was going off, type of thing. But what I'm concerned about now is that, given my age, is it time for me to sell my house before all this begins because I see the property value going down? I see my taxes going up. You guys want me out of the neighborhood? Please reconsider what you're doing on Second Avenue. Calm our anxiety down in some way that we're going to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council chamber that would like to speak to this item? If so, please approach the podium, if you're able to, and state your name and address for the public record. The people that signed in, they signed in with their name and address.
Hi, my name is Rose Nelson. I live at one two nine four nine Second Avenue South. And I just want to know about the pathway. There's a trail that goes from Civic Center Parkway to one thirtieth, and I want to know if that's going to stay in place or if that's going to be removed as part of the process. It's like a walk path.
Okay, I don't, we're going to take the public testimony and then answer the questions after we've collected them. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the council chamber that would like to speak to this item? Mr. Trashinsky, is there anybody on Zoom that wants to speak to this item?
Nobody on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom? And nobody else in the council chamber approaching the podium? So we will close the public hearing at is, at seven thirty-five, and we'll open this up for discussion or, please, Mr. Thompson, are you welcome to?
Chair, just, I took notes on the questions, so just want to offer some of the answers that the neighbors have asked. And after that, we're happy to sit down. I know we had the one neighborhood meeting. We're happy to sit down with neighbors, with the architects and our project team to work through any kind of the specific things as well after this meeting as well. But a couple of questions that came up on the traffic control. So one hundred and thirtieth Street will continue to be a through street, and then the intersection will be controlled by stop signs, both at the Second Avenue and at the entrance to City Hall, the traffic volumes. As, as Mr. Lindberg said at the beginning, are not expected to meet any sort of threshold for signalization. We don't expect a strong usage at that intersection. So it will just be stop-controlled at the Second Avenue and at the, the secondary entrance, and then one hundred and thirtieth would be a through street. We don't believe it's going to impact property values, right? I think we talked a little bit in Mr. Morosola's presentation about the importance that we've put on, one, maintaining the trees that are on one hundred and thirtieth Street. We know that those trees a day provide a pretty significant buffer, at least in leaf-on conditions up to the back of the building. We know in the winter that there's some, you can see the, the building from one hundred and thirtieth Street in the neighborhood in the wintertime. But our team, the design team, has taken great straits to try to, you know, minimize grading and maintain as many trees on the, on the south side of one hundred and thirtieth Street as possible, and then ensure that the landscaping, the reinstalled landscaping out there provides kind of that buffer and screening from that neighborhood because we know it's important to, that we're, that we're sensitive to that. The other things, we want, of course, want to be a good neighbor. I know that when the trash pickup question came up at the neighborhood meeting, Mr. Becker immediately addressed it that night, and so it's good to hear that we're addressing the, the trash pickup times. That's important to us, as well as the air conditioning units. Obviously, those would be upgraded and, and be less of an issue moving forward. So, and then the trail, I just want to confirm with Brooke and Quinn that the trail connection, the public trail connection between Civic Center Parkway and one hundred and thirtieth Street remains, so that will still be available to the public. Beautiful back there and into the woods and back there, so that will all remain as part of the project for the neighborhood and the broader community to use. So that was a list of questions I had. Again, we're happy to meet continuously with the neighbors out there to work through it and keep them updated on the project as it continues forward.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the clarifications. Any discussion or comments from commissioners? Okay, I'm going to start. I'm going to get, get us started off. So first of all, I want to commend the city staff for their responsiveness to people's concerns, namely the garbage cans. I'd also like to commend the architect for really a sensitive design that's pretty, you know, subtle from the one hundred and thirtieth street side and yet civically appropriate from the public-facing side along Civic Center Parkway. I guess I might feel differently if I lived right on Second Avenue across from this new entrance. But I also know that we have excellent Police Department, and I would sleep very, I feel like I would sleep very comfortably knowing that they were that close, so. That's all I have to say. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner John?
I understand about the concerns that the residents are having on Second Avenue. I, I live off Eighteenth Avenue, which is further down one hundred and thirtieth, and when I first saw that, I was thinking, oh, wow, easier access to City Hall, but that's not going to be the case here. That's what I took it as, but I do, I do understand the values of the homes. But I also know that there isn't a whole lot of traffic that would be going through there, given that that's just where the Police are parking basically. I don't think you're going to see a whole significant increase in, in traffic. That's just my take on it. Otherwise, I think that, again, the architects did a really good job in, in bringing in the, the lighting, bringing in more space. I really appreciate that. It looks really beautiful, and they did, I mean, a fantastic job on Firehouse One, so I can see this being a really nice upgrade, that a necessary upgrade too for City Hall and for the Police if you ever. upgrade, that, a necessary upgrade, too, for City Hall and for the Police. If you ever go into the Police Station, it is really cramped in there. So not that I've been there for the wrong reasons.
I'd like to make a comment. When you talk about safety, the George Floyd thing was going on, my daughter called, and she said, Mom, I want you to come to my house. And I said, I live right next to the Police Station. Where's the place you can be right now, Mom?
Thank you. Any comment, Commissioner Anderson?
I would say that on the entrance from 130th, you put as much marking as possible to say it's a private entrance or restricted entrance, so that people don't turn in there thinking they can get to City Hall by turning in there, just like Chris just said, that they know this is not public. It is public, but it's not, you know, access to anything.
Any other comments from commissioners or a motion?
Chair?
Commissioner Hamilton?
I move that we approve the PUD amendment for the expansion of City Hall and the Police Department at 100 Civic Center Parkway, subject to the six conditions stated.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded. We'll have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So this item will be at the city council, the next city council meeting, which is on September 3rd, and this is one meeting sooner than the normal schedule. So September 3rd, city council is when this will be voted upon. Again, this will be on the consent, automatically goes the consent agenda because we voted unanimously. So our next item on our agenda are updates. Are there any updates from commissioners? No updates from commissioners. Are there any updates from planning staff? I see our next planning commission is September 9th. Any other updates?
I can, Chair Commissioners, update, the last city council meeting on August 20th, North Imports LLC, the open sales lot that we approved, was approved by council. That PUD, goes up for a PUD rezoning at 175, 1705 Highway 13 East. So that was approved. And then one quick update, too, on the Burnsville Holdings Drive-Thru at, that's the old Chinese gourmet restaurant there, located at 1290 Aldridge Avenue. It sounds like to me at this time, and Kevin's been working with the applicant closely on this one, they are proposing some other site improvements to the building. And at this time, it sounds like they're going through the final plat process, but potentially withhold, withdrawing the CUP and coming back through with some additional alterations to the building and site and other improvements, if that's correct. If not, Kevin can tell them. So we'll see that one again, with some more improvements on there. They're looking to really redo the whole facade building and everything and update the site. That's it.
Great. That leads us to our last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. Is anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.